That's my basic pieces and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is again pleased to have Mr. Rupa Intrevati, leader of the Hindu temple, Babs Mandir, to lead us in prayer. Welcome back to council.
Sri Swamini Narayan Bhagwaniye Akshar Purushvatham Maharaja Neeje Pramukh Swami Maharaja Neeje Mahant Swami Maharaja Neeje Atha Shanti Paathah Hari Om Dyo Shanti Anta Riksha Gom Shanti Prathavi Shanti Rapa Shanti Rohadaya Shantihi Vanaspataya Shanti Rishvadeva Shanti Rishvam Shanti Sarva Gom Shanti 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 Hari Om Shanti 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 Om Astoma Sadgamaya Tamso Ma Jotirgamaya Mruhtyur Ma Amrutamgamaya Om Shanti 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 Om Sahnavavatu Sahnav Bhunaktu Sahaviriam Karvavahi Tejas Vinabaditamastu Ma Vit Vishavahe Om Shanti 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 Shushanti Rabhavatu Sarvarish Shanti Rabhavatu.
Diwali, the festival of lights, is celebrated by Indians of the Hindu, Sikh, and Jain faiths. As BABS Hindus, the festival is a multi-day celebration that strengthens bonds between families and communities through events at home, Mandir, and workplaces. The BABS community in Columbus and its volunteers are active in the central Ohio and various community service events such as walk-a-thons, blood drives, food drives, and health awareness lectures, and much more, which embody the motto of "In the joy of others lies our own", by His Holiness Ramukshwami Maharaj, whose centennial we celebrate this year. And now the translations of the prayers. Unto the heaven be peace, unto the sky and earth be peace. Peace be unto the water, unto the herbs and trees be peace, unto all the gods be peace, unto Brahma and unto all be peace. And may we realize that peace, Om, peace, peace, peace. Lead us from the unreal to the real, lead us from darkness to light, lead us from death to immortality, Om, peace, peace, peace. Om, may the guru and the disciple be paved on the path of study together. Together, the guru and disciple enjoy studies. Together, the guru and the disciple should do the work of study with deep concentration. Let what we study be full of genius, may it not give rise to anonymity because of ignorance. Om, Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Namaste and happy Diwali.
Thank you. Would you, actually, for, as we go to our seats, would you explain to the community what Diwali is as we celebrate this holy day and month for the Hindu community here in Columbus, just as an education piece for folks?
Yeah, so, in short, I would say that Diwali is the festival of lights, right? And it is bringing us all into darkness to the light.
Thank you so much. And again, council looks forward to hosting our first Diwali celebration in council chambers on Wednesday. It's a reminder that, again, this is the people's chamber, it's for everybody, regardless of where you come from. If you're a resident, this is your space, so we look forward to that recognition. Thank you so much for being here. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burosa De Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to read it to the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burosa De Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Seeing none, the journal was approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read to the record?
Not this time.
We'll go around the dais, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember?
Councilmember Burosa De Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Favor and President Pro Tem Brown. We held our first inaugural Girls Summit here in honor of Day of the Girl. It was Igniting Your Political Power. We had almost 100 girls here in the chamber. We also created a pretty lit TikTok. If y'all have not checked it out, please go to our IG. But we had an amazing conversation around, we had a panel, and then the women and girls talked about their, the things that were driving them. We had, we heard some really insightful perspectives from our young people and also solutions to how we want to address some of the issues that are facing our young people. So I want to thank all of the community organizations that joined us here. Also want to give a shout out to all three of our teams and our community engagement staff, who are also all here representing Strong, who put together an amazing day. So, thanks. Off for me.
Thank you. Co-sign. And also, quick announcement that as fall weather sets in, we are pleased to invite council, or community residents all across Columbus to our playground hours. We will still be doing them outside. The weather is just fine for it. And our next one will be on Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 to 11:30 at Frank's Park. Everyone is welcome, whether or not you have children. But if you do have children, we hope that holding it on the playground gives you the ability to both entertain your kids and advocate for your community at once. So, see you on the 5th.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Good evening. Tomorrow evening, I will be hosting a community conversation focused on the issue of flavored tobacco. I invite all residents who are interested in this conversation to join us tomorrow night at 4:30 PM at the Reeve Avenue Center. For more information, please email my legislative aide, Snjindal, at s-n-j-i-n-d-a-l at columbus.gov. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Diana Williams, the founder of Ohio Women Against Domestic Violence, to the podium. I have Resolution 0216X-2022 to declare October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Columbus and to recognize Ohio Women Against Domestic Violence for their ongoing efforts to raise awareness for domestic violence prevention. Domestic violence impacts men, women, and children of every age, background, and belief. Nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the United States have suffered abuse from an intimate partner. And in 2020, there were more than 15,259 domestic violence calls in Columbus and central Ohio. Data from the CDC's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey indicates that domestic violence can be diminished by educating and empowering communities to develop and maintain healthy relationship skills. The Ohio Women Against Domestic Violence works to raise awareness of domestic violence by educating communities on the necessity of developing and maintaining healthy relationships and offering supportive resources through their community-based works, network, excuse me. I want to thank you all for the work that you continue to do on behalf of all of our residents. The group will be hosting an inaugural survivor walk on October 29th, where they plan to launch the Purple Peacock Project and declare October 29th as National Purple Day. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Williams.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Favors, and thank you, President Harden, and all the council members. I am Diana Williams, and I'm the founder of Ohio Women Against Domestic Violence. And I am here today, I'm honored. First, I'd like to say thank you for all the information that you provided, because it is all correct. And this year, our focus is on teenage girls, because one out of every 3 teenage girls is in a domestic violent relationship. This year, we have the honor of hosting a breakfast. It's called Jeans, Purple, and Pearls Day. It will be held at Afrocentric K-12 Middle School on Saturday, October 29th. And we have a host of powerful speakers and officials that will be attending. So we want to invite everyone out in the community. And I do want to acknowledge this week is our Empower Her Week. So we are having a series of events leading up to the 29th. Yesterday, we had a Self-Care Sunday for survivors and victims of abuse. And Wednesday, tomorrow, we will be holding a mental health panel at the Columbus Public Library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and we'll be discussing the different forms of abuse. And then Saturday, of course, will be our breakfast. And then we will immediately follow with our community walk. And that will conclude our Domestic Violence Month.
Thank you so much. And, you know, kind of tagging along with Councilmember Burosa De Padilla, and our inaugural International Day of Girls Summit, and thinking about how we were encouraging the young women to use their voice and letting them know that their voice has power, this conversation today feels very timely. And so, because we're now the Cool Women's Caucus Group, because we're on TikTok, how can the young folks find out more information about domestic violence in general and just provide support if need be?
So, our organization is newly formed, and we are actually providing support by, as we are being contacted at this time. Our goal is to establish a 24-hour, 365-day support line, hotline as well, and also to contract with various investors and hotels, so that we can have some drop-ins for those that are trying to exit a domestic violence situation. Right now, with the teens, a lot of teens will not speak up and speak out because of the fact that they believe that love is abuse. They believe that if someone shows them that kind of attention, regardless if it's good or bad, it's love. So, our goal is to encourage teens and adult women to speak up and speak out. And we want to empower survivors, and then in turn, they can turn out to be successful in the community. Our entire organization and network is empowered by women that are survivors.
So, social media is on the way?
Yes, it is.
All right, wonderful.
We just formed September 1st, so this is what we've been doing ever since we've been on the ground. We've been on, we hit the pavement running. So, we appreciate all the support we've been getting from the city of Columbus.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by my colleagues? Well, once again, thank you for the work that you all are doing. We're excited to have you in our community. We hope you go out of business, candidly. We want to make sure that we're curbing, you know, these behaviors and educating folks as much as possible. But with that, I move for passage.
Bangston, Burosa De Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you so much, Clerk. Excuse me, Council President Harden, I have one announcement, as well, a couple of announcements. But first one is, as a reminder, the city of Columbus and Axon's Community Impact Team are partnering to co-host an event series titled Share the Table on Columbus's newest body-worn camera program. These events will create space for community members to learn about the latest technology coming to Columbus and engage in thoughtful dialogue on public safety technology. The events will take place Thursday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Grange Insurance Audubon Center. And the second one will take place on November 1st, 11:00 to 2:00 at the Boathouse. To learn more about these upcoming events or get the RSVP link, please email my legislative assistant, lucyfrank@ljfrank@columbus.gov. That's lucyfrank@ljfrank@columbus.gov. Also, a reminder that a week from today is Halloween, and there will be plenty of trick-or-treating. Let's hope that it's not cold, wet, and dreary. But just a reminder that there will be a lot of young souls out, with adults, out on the streets that night from 6:00 to 8:00. And I want to make sure that it's a safe one, so wish everybody a very happy Halloween. Thank you very much, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't have any resolutions, but I would like to recognize the young men of the Columbus Urban League My Brothers Keeper Program, a house at South High School, who are with us in chambers this evening. Got to speak with them a little bit earlier, and we're happy to have them here with us today. Are there any other comments from our elected officials? May we have a motion to weigh the reading of times of the 30-day legislation by the clerk? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Burosa De Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to record the orders, numbers of 30-day legislation?
Technology Committee Ordinance is 2741 and 2800-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 200X-205X-2022 and 2806-2022. Finance Committee Resolution 202X-2022. Ordinance is 2730, 2738-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2467 and 2541-2022. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2826, 2720, 2746, 2764, 2785, 2789, 2827-2022. And Housing Committee Ordinance 2768-2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 213X, 214X, 215X-2022. Economic Development Committee Resolution 196X-2022. Ordinance 2748-2022. Small and Minority Business Committee Ordinance is 2706, 2718-2022. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2686, 2759-2022. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 2765, 2766, 2796, 2815, 2820-2022. Finance Committee Ordinance is 2592, 2600, 2666, 2715, 2762, and 2783-2022. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2291, 2458, 2773, 2774-2022. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2598, 2602, 2642, 2690-2022. Housing Committee Ordinance is 2672, 2678, 2679, 2680-2022. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is 2655 and 2803-2022. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2769-2022. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 2557, 2681, and 2823-2022.
We have one speaker on the consent agenda. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins is speaking on Ordinance 2672-2022. Welcome back to chambers, Mr. Wilkins.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. First of all, I was speaking in favor of this, and only four reasons why. I do think, modify the Land Service LLC, and I would think, and 2023 all the way up to 2028, I would like to see more money involved in this, up to $125,000. After 2023, I would love to see $587,000. That's to create a new name for this called the Vacant Home Land Service, LLC. And that amount should be, continue up to almost a quarter million dollars. It seems like we are not taking care of the empty buildings, but we seem like we are taking care of the land services. That I, just to bring some ideas to the table here. And with $75,000, is that just to take care of the land, or cutting the grass? If we're talking about bringing this technology, the future of Ohio, as a great vibrant place to live, we want some ideas to change this modified name to another name that can take care of the land service, the building, and the deterioration of the building. You know, we talk about all these ideas, but we want to remain, to make sure this money can be used idolized and wise. I would like to know, $75,000, how does this money get used, and where does this money go? If we continually to talk about $75,000 for this Land Service LLC, I propose a vacant home service, LLC. C what stands for the citizens, D what stands for development. And if I want something to be like this through all state of Ohio, we don't want $75,000. We want something that's a quarter million dollars to take care of every parts of this community and every parts of this city. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Stevens, are you able to, if you don't have answers now, follow up with Mr. Wilkins after the meeting?
Thank you, Chair Brown. We will do that.
Thank you so much, Director. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Mr. Bangston?
Yes.
Ms. Burosa De Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should call you last. Ms. Favor?
Yes, with the exception of Ordinance 2706 and 2718-2022, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, with the exception of 2642, with which I'm abstaining.
President Pro Tem Brown?
Yes. Consent agenda items are passed with the noted exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Press Pro Tem. All right, we will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, the Economic Development Committee, for second reading, we have Ordinance 2648-2022 to authorize the director to enter into a nonprofit service contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council in the amount up to $250,000 for the creation of a Columbus Public Art Master Plan, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $250,000 from the Neighborhood Economic Development Fund. As I give some remarks, I'm going to ask Tom Katzenmeyer and Jamie Goldstein with GCAC to come up to the podium. Council colleagues, as mentioned in the title, this ordinance provides the Greater Columbus Arts Council with $250,000 for the creation of a Columbus Public Art Master Plan. I know everyone on this dais is excited about that and understands the importance that art has in our community. Art is invaluable part of the city's unique culture, our history, identity, and our economy. So it is imperative that we have a comprehensive city development, developed plan, and investment in a plan for public art. The RFP created by this ordinance will open up an opportunity for an organization to craft this public arts master plan in collaboration with the community, creating a public art strategy for the city that will represent our communities, our creativity, and our neighborhoods. Tonight, in chambers, no stranger to these chambers, we have Tom Katzenmeyer, who's the president and CEO of the Greater Columbus Arts Council, and Ms. Jamie Goldstein, who is the vice president of marketing and communications and events at GCAC, to speak on what their organization hopes to achieve with this master plan. Tom?
Thank you, Councilmember Bangston, Council President Harden, Council President Pro Tem Brown, and Councilmembers Favor, Remy, and Burosa De Padilla, and especially to Emmanuel and Lourdes for their service on our board. We're grateful for that. So we're delighted to be here tonight. We're just going to take up a couple minutes of your time. This is something we've been drinking, dreaming of for quite some time. We put it off during the pandemic. It's a key part of our five-year strategic plan, so we're ready to get underway. We're grateful for your incredible support, for the public support that we get for the arts and your future investment in public art. We know that public art can express community values, enhance our environment, transform a landscape, or question our assumptions. Placed in public sites, this art is for everyone. This is a form of collective community expression that also provides a space for community dialogue. Investment in public art both inspires and engages us. And yet, of the 14 largest cities in the country, Columbus is the only one without a master plan to guide public and private investment in public art. As a consequence, we are underfunding our public art, and up to now have had no intentional strategy for equity and representation. We need more art in neighborhoods, and more art by women, and more art by artists of color. This master plan will help us address both of the issues. It will also set a vision and develop a clear set of community-informed goals, policies, objectives, to provide guidance for local stakeholders, funders, artists, businesses, and the community. The plan will cast a bold vision to catalyze the creation of more public art in public spaces in Columbus and Franklin County, and serve as a tool to guide the community in arts planning for the short-term and long-term basis.
Thanks, Tom. We have benchmarked with peer cities around the country and found that similar initiatives have cost between $300,000 and $500,000. So we are targeting a budget of $500,000 total for this plan, so that our plan may be informed by robust and inclusive community engagement. That is at the very top of our priorities that the people are able to weigh in on what our future public art plan looks like. We will be contributing funds, GCAC will be contributing funds, and we are pursuing funding from other parts of the community. The implementation of this master plan will be in a collaborative way, as we love to do everything the Columbus way, as they say, in partnership with the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. Later this week, we will issue the RFP nationally, and in order to identify a consultant to conduct this public engagement piece and develop the plan, we expect to bring the consultant in early in 2023, in Q1, and then deliver the master plan within 12 to 15 months of that. Residents will be our most important contributors to this process. We will invite them to share their perspectives and experiences to inform the plan, so that it may represent our community's values and our aspirations. Again, thank you so much for your investment in the future of public art in Columbus, and we're happy to answer any questions. I do also want to thank Director Stevens, Jennifer Fenning in the Department of Development, and of course, Councilmembers Burosa De Padilla and Councilmember Remy.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I just want to say, I'm so, so excited about this plan. I mean, art is, it transcends language. It helps people feel things. It brings community together, and it makes people think, and it heals. And I think it really, truly is a universal language. And so, it's about time that Columbus has done this, because I think this is who we are, right? And I just want to commend the efforts that GCAC has done to ensure that this is an equitable process, to ensure that we to ensure that this is an equitable process, to ensure that we are elevating artists from all walks of life, from artists of color, that we are engaging them in the process and that our community are diverse. The richness of the diversity of our community is really expressed in every venue, especially through the art. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Remy.
And I'll echo what she said. I mean, super excited about this plan. I mean, art changes life and we are a big city now. And so having a cemented plan for the city moving forward, we're super excited about that. And so it's exciting to be able to vote on this and watch this process take place over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think it's really imperative that, you know, we talk about plans a lot, but this is a critical one. You know, my hat is off to you, Tom, and Jamie. Your leadership at GCAC has been why we've been intentional about equity, but having it as a part of the fabric of our city is critically to move forward. I just have one recommendation, which is make sure we keep the deer on the riverfront and then you're good to go.
You are very popular.
We are.
And you're good to go with me. But thank you again for your leadership. And with that, Council President, I move for passage. By voice.
Chair, second. Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Mr. Bankston.
Yes.
Ms. Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Favor.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is all I have in the Economic Development Committee this evening. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by Press Protam.
Thank you, Council President. In finance tonight, we have ordinance 2756-2022 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase vapor draw propane with Lind Gas &amp; Equipment Incorporated, to authorize the expenditure of $1, to waive the provisions of Columbus, waive the provisions of competitive bidding, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Fleet Management is the primary user of vapor draw propane, used to fill vapor draw cylinders to fuel equipment at multiple locations. The term of the proposed option contract would be approximately three years, expiring October 31, 2025, with the option to renew for an additional year. The purchasing office received only one bid by Lind Gas &amp; Equipment, and they were found to be the lowest responsible and best bidder by the purchasing office. Their contract will expire on September 27, 2024. Emergency legislation is requested because the current contract will expire at the end of October. Do my colleagues have any questions? If not, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
May I move to education?
Please.
In education, we have ordinance 2402-2022 to authorize and direct the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter into contracts with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations to provide educational services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize a transfer within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $5,308,500 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This funding is for our Early Start Columbus program, which expands access to high-quality pre-K classrooms in partnership with Columbus City Schools and community-based providers. Early Start Columbus dollars are leveraged with funds from the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Department of Jobs and Family Services to make funding stretch as far as possible to maximize the number of children and families we serve. And that's why the Early Start Columbus program and the Birth to Five Plan are such important investments. We know that quality early education significantly improves literacy, language, and math skills. Children who reach kindergarten academically ready are more likely to succeed in school and throughout life. I would like to thank the administration for their partnership in this effort. I'm proud to support Early Start Columbus each year through this ordinance, and I'm very grateful for the hard work of Matt Smido and Sierra Adams with the Office of Education. Their ongoing work on these important investments is more than bringing an ordinance to council every year. It goes above and beyond in their work with our providers year-round to help identify needs and solve problems and be a resource for a community of providers who are doing important work, often with not much support. So thank you to the Office of Education. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, President Harden. First, in Public Service and Transportation Day, we have ordinance 2536-2022 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee, simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the Broad Street at James Road project, to authorize the expenditure of $435,686, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will allow for the city to acquire real estate in order to complete the Broad Street-James Road project with the overall goal being to reduce crashes, improve traffic flow efficiency, and improve pedestrian access and safety. The intersection of East Broad Street and James Road suffers from elevated car crashes due to the high number of left and right turns from James Road and conflicts with access to business driveways. So do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, 2737-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a contract with G&amp;G Concrete Construction LLC for the citywide curb ramps 2022 project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,974,061 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. So this contract includes building 509 ADA curb ramps at 129 various locations in Columbus based on the 311 Service Request Ramp Priority List. I did have a visual, but it was not going to be a good one. So visualize in your heads. Either, so the process of how these folks got on the priority list, or I'm sorry, these areas got on the priority list, was either by email or 311. Each request was evaluated and it was determined that the location was either, or the nearby location is either hazardous or it was requested in the proximity of a person with disabilities. So that's how the locations were then prioritized. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Great. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Ordinance 2753-2022 to amend the 2022 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with G&amp;G Concrete Construction LLC for the resurfacing 2022 rehabilitation project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,719,267.10 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. The resurfacing 2022 rehabilitation project plans to repair and improve 15 concrete and 10 brick city streets. The work consists of repairing and replacing concrete slabs, sawing and sealing concrete joints, repairing and replacing brick bases and surface courses, and repairing designated brick crosswalks and other work as may be necessary. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Great. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have from my committees this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, chaired by Councilmember Doran. Second chair is Councilmember Bankston. Councilmember Bankston, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. In Public Utilities Committee, for a second reading, we have ordinance 2599-2022 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to appropriate and accept the remaining fee, simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the Blueprint Miller Kelton Kent Fairwood Permeable Pavers Project and to authorize an expenditure of up to $693 from existing ACD I001758-10. This acquisition of this real estate will help improve certain portions of the public sewer infrastructure on Lily Avenue and Beulyn Avenue in the Miller Kelton area. The city attorney pursuant to Columbus City Code Section 909.03 served notice to all of the owners of the real estate of the public project's purpose and necessity. However, the city attorney was unable to either locate some of the real estate's owners or agree with some of them in good faith regarding the amount of just compensation. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 2671-2022 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water to authorize the transfer within of $3,300,000 and the expenditure of $6,100,000 from the Water Operating Fund. This legislation authorizes the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water to keep our water safe. Columbus has been a leader in water quality since the 1900s when the Hoover Brothers researched water treatment methods to reduce typhoid, which was prevalent during that time. As a result of their research, Columbus has gained national prominence in the water industry. Our customers can consume their water with confidence, knowing it meets all requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. If there are any questions from my colleagues, seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
And the last ordinance in the Public Utilities Committee this evening is ordinance 2829-2022 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Ruland Company for the Lockborn Road Quarry Embankment Improvements Project, to authorize a transfer expenditure up to $3,285,895.58 within the Water General Obligation Voted Bonds Fund to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service for the Division of Water, to authorize an amendment to the 2022 capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. This project will rebuild the eroded embankment that protects the Lockborn Road Quarry property from the Big Walnut Creek. The quarry property will play an important role in handling the water treatment residuals from the Parsons Avenue Water Plant, which is an important part of the Columbus area water supply system. Emergency designation is requested so that the embankment repair can be completed before the spring rains that cause high river levels, which may interfere with the construction and cause additional erosion. This in turn would result in increased costs to the city. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have in the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in the Housing Committee, we have ordinance 2610-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Stout Ross LLC in an amount up to $100,000 in support of a cost-benefit analysis study for tenants facing eviction in the city of Columbus, to authorize an appropriation and an expenditure within the Public Safety Initiative's sub-fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Department to enter into a contract with Stout in an amount of up to $100,000 in order to support the cost-benefit analysis study for tenants facing eviction in the city of Columbus. In 2017, the Legal Aid Society of Columbus started a daily clinic in the hallway outside of eviction court. They had noticed that while 90% of landlords came to court with an attorney, only about 10% of tenants did. The clinic was designed to close that gap so that tenants who came to court without an attorney could get on-the-spot legal assistance that same day. The Tenant Advocacy Project, or TAP, was the first such clinic of its kind in Ohio, and its impact was felt immediately. With the support of Columbus City Council, the clinic has grown from a single full-time TAP attorney and some volunteers to a team of now over 15 attorneys, paralegals, and social workers. In July of this year, we committed another $1.5 million for a one-year pilot program with the Legal Aid Society to provide an even more robust eviction prevention team for tenants facing an eviction. This study, championed by Stout in collaboration with the county and the city, local legal aid providers and other interested parties will conduct research and data gathering regarding the impacts of eviction on low-income tenants in the city, as well as the benefits that could be realized if low-income tenants were represented in eviction proceedings. The result of this study will help the city quantify the costs and benefits and ultimately a return on the investment. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues? Yes, Council President Harden.
Just want to say thank you for your leadership in this space. I don't want to speak for our council, but certainly I think that there is a growing belief that right to council is an essential right that our tenants face or deserve. And this council, under your leadership, has really moved in big ways in the last two years to get us closer to being able to provide that right to as many of our residents as possible. And so I think this is an important next step, but I don't think that the conversation is over here.
Yeah.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Brown.
I wanted to commend this work. When I think about the many lessons that COVID-19 taught us, the many opportunities we had to invest differently in communities, assistance to tenants, you know, the rental assistance dollars that came into our community because they were championed by our federal lawmakers, but then because they were utilized well through the Housing Committee to get to tenants. That lesson we learned during COVID. I think this is another commitment to structural change based on those lessons in COVID, right? This is part of that arc, in addition to the $1.5 million for the pilot program at eviction court. So I just want to lift up how important that is. And I think it is unique. This is a unique area of work that's really not resting on our laurels of what we learned in COVID when there was sort of more funding flowing into our community, but saying this is an opportunity for long-term change, to do things differently. So I want to thank you and lift up the pretty groundbreaking, hopefully, things we learn from this.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm excited for this. We talk a lot about the Housing for All legislative package. This is another item to add to those lists of tenant protections that this legislative body has been consistent and excited to continuing to add to those protections for our residents in Columbus. And if you're not familiar with that, that includes protections around source of income discrimination, providing receipts for paying your rent, and options around paying your security deposit on time. As President Protam Brown just indicated, earlier this year, we passed a pilot program around $1.5 million to provide residents with access to an attorney in court. And then now this study today only will further support the need to continue along with that pilot program, take it out of its pilot stage and move it into something permanent for our residents in Columbus. So with that, I'd move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. May I move on to Health and Human Services?
Please.
Tonight in Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 2685-2022 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $3,334,529 and any additional funds for the Ryan White Part A HIV Care Grant Program, to authorize the appropriation of $3,334,529 and any additional funds awarded from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriations between object classes for the Ryan White Part A HIV Grant Program, and to declare an emergency. The Ryan White Part A HIV Grant's purpose is to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV or AIDS living in central Ohio. The goal is that each client will achieve viral suppression, which improves their quality of life and reduces the risk of spreading the infection. This grant will enhance medical services for both somatic and behavioral health, pay for HIV-related doctor visits, mental health services, substance abuse services, and other services allowable by the grant, and strengthen the case management and linkage-to-care programs at CPH. Columbus Public Health has been awarded this grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and has been tasked to improve the efficiency of the reallocation of funds as necessary in order to minimize unused funds and to maximize the available services. For this reason, it is necessary to authorize the Board of Health to accept and appropriate $3,334,529 in grant monies to fund- $3,334,529 in grant monies to fund the Ryan White Part A HIV Care Grant Program. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have two items in the Safety Committee this evening, ordinance 2628 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $4,118,758.72 within various projects of the Safety Voted Bond Fund, to amend the 2021 capital improvement budget, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, Chapter 329, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts with and issue purchase orders to Atlantic Emergency Solutions for the purchase of one ladder in the amount of $1,983,538, Sutton Corporation for the purchase of two Monarch Custom Pompers in the amount of $1,726,368, and Stryker Sales Corporation for the purchase of seven Stryker Ambulance Power Cots, to authorize the expenditure of $4,159,152.91 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This custom apparatus from Pearson-Sutton has been the Fire Division's standard equipment for several years, as FIRE believes these products are the best for their operations, given the quality, durability, and custom, customiz, customizab, I can't say that word tonight, customability each manufacturer offers, as well as the cost-effective approach that is resulted from negotiating directly with each manufacturer during the build process. By dealing directly with each manufacturer during the specification and price negotiation process, FIRE is able to control costs to remain within budget, budgeted funding and manage lead times. The Atlanta Emergency Solutions, the Division of Fire is in need to purchase one Pierce tandem access axle 107-foot ladder truck. Included in the quote for the purchase is the cost of three inspection trips for eight CFD personnel totaling $33,000, pre-construction, post-paint, and final. With Sutton, Sutton Corporation, the Division of Fire is in need of two Sutton Corporation Monarch Custom Pompers to replace apparatus that are beyond their useful life with high maintenance costs included. With Sutton Monarch Pumpers purchased will be the purchase installation of all pertinent, these are tug, tug twisters tonight, pertinent equipment to be utilized on the respective vehicles. With Stryker Sales, the Fire Division is in need to purchase seven Stryker Ambulance Power Cots for each of the EMS transport vehicles being ordered from Horton Emergency Vehicles. While in the past, these cots have been included in the specifications, along with other EMS equipment that comes included on the vehicle, it was, has been discovered that buying directly from the manufacturer will result in significant savings to the city. Director, Deputy Director Williams, could you share any additional information about the waiver of competitive bidding, bidding?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Remy. Can you repeat that?
Oh, I just wondered if you could share any additional information about the waiver of competitive bidding.
Well, and I mean, in this, we're using state-of-Ohio term contracts, and as you had mentioned about the standard, you know, standardization of apparatus, both fleet management and fire like that, you know, idea, and to have the standardization of the equipment. Other than that, no.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 2811 to authorize in, 2811-2022, to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Columbus to accept the American Rescue Plan 2022 Crime Lab Backlog Award from the Office of Criminal Justice, to authorize the crime lab manager as the official city representative to act in connection with this grant, to authorize an appropriation of $1 million from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Division of Police to cover the cost of the American Rescue Plan 2022 Crime Lab Backlog Grant activities and expenditures, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police was awarded funding through the American Rescue Plan Funding 2022 Crime Lab Backlog from the Office of Criminal Justice. This federally-supported program seeks to reduce the number of backlog cases and to increase capacity through the purchase of additional instrumentation, software, and supplies. Funds have been awarded for additional DNA equipment and analysis supplies. The cost breakdown for this two-year grant award is as follows: DNA testing equipment worth $847,000, and supplies $153,000. The official city program contact authorized to act in connection with this million-dollar grant is crime lab manager Angela Farrington. The grant award start date is May 1, 2022, and ends May 1, 2024. Director Williams, do you have any additional, Deputy Director Williams, do you have any additional information that you'd like to share? And if you don't, you can just say you're happy to answer any questions.
Maybe just a couple items. As you had mentioned, it is going to go for equipment and supplies. In the DNA section, there'll be additional licenses for gene mapper and stermix software. So, this will allow for the concurrent use of the software by all DNA analysts. There'll also be addition, two additional genetic analyzers, which will allow them to look at more samples and to be analyzed in concurrent batches. So, as you said, it'll help with the backlog that they're having. In addition, there'll be a purchase of DNA extraction, quantification, and amplification kits. And in the firearms section, the purchase of two brass tracks, terminals for NiBAN entry. And NiBAN has to do with the analysis of bullet cartridges, defining, to see if they similar markings in other shootings, other incidents, and to try to tie those together.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. It's exciting to win this grant. Definitely helps in the overall cause of, of the backlogs due to COVID. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have on public safety, with your permission. I move on to environment. Thank you very much. I have ordinance 2788-2022 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into an agreement with Premier Truck Sales and Rentals to rent refuse collection vehicles, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriation within the General Fund, Refuse Collection Division, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $492,000 from the General Fund to pay for this rental agreement, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Refuse Collection is responsible for providing weekly refuse collection to the 344,000 residential units within the city of Columbus. Prior to COVID pandemic, it took nine to 12 months after placement of, of an order to receive a refuse collection trucks. The shutdown of many businesses during the pandemic has caused long delivery delays for these trucks. The projected delivery date of replacement trucks previously on order has been delayed by many months, and delivery times for new orders are now running 12 to 18 months after receipt of order. The Division of, is experiencing a shortage of refuse collection trucks due to downtime needed for repairs of an aging fleet and the delays in getting replacement vehicles that have been ordered. It is necessary to immediately rent refuse collection trucks to continue to provide timely refuse collection to the residents of Columbus. This will allow, also allow the Division to be able to collect refuse during the normal work hours, work week hours, and to avoid routinely scheduled mandatory overtime. Assistant Director Wenzel, do you have any additional information about the waiver of competitive bidding?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Remy, President Harden, members of council. The Department, the only thing I'll add is the department did an extensive search for companies that rent refuse vehicles. We found two in the state of Ohio that rent refuse trucks. Premier Trucking was the only one that had trucks available. As you can imagine, there's been a great shortage with both the public and the private sector in obtaining refuse trucks. A lot of companies are renting them as well as buying them. Premier Truck was the only one that had trucks available for us. Last year, we had a similar agreement that went before council to rent three trucks. We're increasing that to five trucks this year, just to fill that gap until we start receiving these trucks in 18 to 24 months, as you had indicated.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
That is all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing no further business coming for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will not have council next Monday, so we will see everyone back November 7th. We have two numbers.